Okay, it's 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting of the New London Select Board to order. It is Thursday, January 4th, and the first item on our agenda, although I don't see Jamie here, do I see Jamie here? No, okay, well, we'll skip over that. And Steve, you want to speak about the library?
My name is Steve Solomon. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. If you, yeah, make sure you identify yourself and speak into the mic, please.
Okay. Do I keep, do I have to keep pushing it or does it stay on?
No, no, that's fine. It's on now.
Everything is new.
Yeah, it is.
So, as I was saying, my name is Steve Solomon. I am the Chair of the Facilities Committee of a library and a library trustee, and we're here tonight to request that the Select Board authorize a release of $15,800 from the Capital Reserve Fund so we can purchase two mini splits for our library building. These are air conditioning units that are, their age is a little indeterminate, but they still use Freon and they're pretty much beyond their end of their useful life, and we need to have your approval first before we can then proceed to contract with the supplier. And we do have a bid, so that number that I've just quoted is based on a bid we received from the supplier.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve $15,800 from the Capital Reserve Funds for replacement of two mini splits for the, for Tracy Memorial Library? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Who's going to talk about the roof? Are you not going to talk about the bond on that?
No, I have family in the world who want to talk about the roof.
Well, I have it on my agenda. I didn't know whether you wanted to talk about the condition of the roof and...
Okay, I'll give you sort of a summary of what's going on. Last month, we knew the roof has some old bits to it, and we had received a proposal or a general idea that we would need to replace it in a, maybe roughly two years from now, but we received a report within the last month that the roof is a lot closer to failure in many respects than we had anticipated. And we received one bid for about $275,000 to repair the roof. We are in the process of soliciting other bids to evaluate the need for that work and the price. But we realized that an expenditure of that size is, would be a lot to put on the budget in a given year, especially when the repair, so to speak, will be lasting for several years. And therefore, we thought it would be appropriate to sort of spread that cost over the, more or less, the useful life of the roof so that not one group of taxpayers has to bear the burden of that replacement. There are also some other work that needs to be done at the library, mostly outside repairs of windows and doors and things in the older part of the building. So, we added about $75,000 to the roof estimate to come up with a general proposal at this point for $350,000 bond, which we have not yet finalized because we're still waiting for more bids on the roof, more evaluation, but that's our best take at this point as to what our needs will be for the coming fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Any questions?
Yeah, do you have any questions, Bill?
Steve, I'd like to talk a bit about the process here, if I can. You know, clearly, you know, anything, whether it's the library or another department, capital expenditures are identified over a period of time, and in fact, you've had the roof on your list for a long while, so you're really bringing it forward. And so, I don't think there's any, unfortunately, any question about that other than the unfortunate timing, but the, how something gets funded is a different process. The department heads don't decide how to fund something. And at this particular point, this is not the proper time for the town to go into another bonding issue. I'm going to take this off while I talk, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
My glasses are fogging up. This is not the time for us to use bonding for a facility repair project because we have significant, excuse me, potential long-term financing needs on the horizon for anything ranging from a police facility, whether new or renovated, sidewalks, water capacity, energy systems, communications tower, Main Street design, records management, conservation, fire station expansion. These are all things we've had on the, on the list, and we've known for some time that capital needs were going to accelerate over the next few years due to a combination of the temporary decrease in funding reserves last year because of the issues with inflation and the deferred facilities projects, new heavy vehicle acquisitions that continue to come along. And so, as far as I'm concerned at least, I think the acceleration of the library roof project will necessitate an acceleration of funding from the, from this year's budget or from FY25's budget, and the town has limited capacity to prudently fund these other projects that way. So, I propose to the finance officer a way to increase capital reserves, transfer the capital reserves out of the budget that we're now working on in order to fund this, but I think, I'd like to have you, if my colleagues agree, not worry about how we find, find funded. That will be our problem and the budget committee's problem because we really, our budget, our debt capacity doesn't allow us to fund facility projects at this point out of, out of long-term debt.
Yeah, I don't think, obviously, you didn't think that was going to happen tonight anyway.
But that doesn't change the fact that we do need to do it.
Right, and we don't have a particular axe to grind with how the, how it gets funded. We just need, and you need to know that we need it. I appreciate your understanding of the situation, and we'll proceed in whichever way the board and the community think is the best way to go.
All right.
Tell us, tell us what we need to do, and then we'll try to figure it out with the budget committee and the finance officer.
Well, we're working, as I said, we're working on the bids and an evaluation, so we'll be in the process of presenting that in the next month or six weeks or whatever we need to do to get it.
Well, the time is a little bit shorter than that.
Oh, really?
We have to have everything done by February 7th.
Oh, okay, that's about a month.
That's the, I think that's the date for the budget hearing at this point?
They haven't actually said it, but it's going to be around that time.
Okay.
So, we'll need the amount of money, the amount of money, how we're going to...
Any amount of money of the size we're talking about to be, before it's appropriated at the town meeting has to go through a public hearing process, and at least, the last I heard, the calendar was close to February 7th to do that.
Okay, we will then accelerate as best we can the research that we need to do to pin down these numbers and the extent of the work that we need so we can then present that in a timely way.
And it can be approximate numbers, particularly if we're talking about using operating, uh, reserve funds as opposed to...
Well, I think the 350 is about our best guess at the moment, depending on how some of the other bids come in.
Well, I would, I would hope that maybe if, if you hear that we're going to do it out of reserves, when you don't have to necessarily put everything in one bucket.
That's right.
That we could do the roof and maybe some of the other expenditures that you were going to try to put together might still be able to be deferred.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, too.
Take a look at that, be great.
Sure.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. BB, did you have any?
No.
Okay. Jamie, I think, where are you, Jamie? I don't see you. Oh, you want to talk to us about the solar array?
With pleasure, and I apologize for being late.
No, that's, that's fine.
So, yes, I'm Jamie Hess, Chair of the New London Energy Committee.
My God.
And, oh.
Okay, it's got to turn from red to green. I'm Jamie Hess, Chair of the New London Energy Committee, and we've been meeting over the last several months to come up with an idea of how we could meet two goals, one shorter term and one longer term. The first goal being to be able to purchase the investor-owned solar arrays and from that point on, get free electricity from them. And number two, how to move beyond that and achieve our goal of 100% renewable electricity by the year 2030. That was passed by our town meeting in, I believe, 2018. So, the shorter-term goal is the most important, so I'll discuss that first. So, right now, we have two municipal solar arrays, as many of you are aware, one on the roof of our big highway garage on South Pleasant Street and the other on the ground behind the sewer department at the end of Frothingham Road. And those arrays are owned by outside investors, which gave us a big advantage in terms of two things. First of all, there was no upfront cost to build the arrays. They were totally financed by the outside investors. And number two, there was no impact to our annual budget in that the price for the electricity was set at exactly the price that we were paying to Eversource at the time. So, at this point, the monthly payment for the electricity generated by those arrays, and it's averaged over the year, so it doesn't go up on sunny days and down on, down in the winter. It's $2,400 a month, more or less, and that's 12 months a year. So, over the 12 months, that would amount to $28,800. So, if we're able to purchase the solar arrays, we can eliminate that monthly cost and save ourselves almost $29,000 a year. So, the option to buy the solar arrays will be granted by the investors to us at the beginning of the year 2026. So, we established a capital reserve fund to put money aside on an annual basis to enable that purchase. And due to inflation and other factors such as the capital reserve contributions being cut in half last year, we've fallen behind on our goal of amassing enough funds to enable that purchase in year 2026. So, what we're here to do is to propose a catch-up plan to give us enough money to buy those arrays at the earliest opportunity, because if we don't have the money at the time we're granted the option, all is not lost. We'll get another chance a year later, but in the meantime, we're out $29,000 that we could have saved by buying them sooner rather than later. There's also the possibility that if we don't buy them at the first opportunity, the fair market value appraisal will go up the following year, and the next year, they would cost us more. So, we're recommending getting ready to make the purchase as soon as we have the opportunity, provided that the fair market value appraisal is reasonable. If it was exorbitant, we would say, no, thanks, you can keep them. So, right now, as of this fiscal year, we have approximately $135,000 in the capital reserve fund. The, this year, this fiscal year's deposit hasn't actually been made, but it has been appropriated, so we can assume it's there. So, we're estimating that we could need as much as $300,000 total to make the purchase, which means that we have to make up the missing $165,000 over the next two years. And that would mean an appropriation to the capital reserve of $82,500 for fiscal years 2025 and 2026. So, that's the Energy Committee's recommendation. We would certainly be willing to compromise for a lesser figure, but that would increase the risk that we might not be able to afford them when we're granted the option, and then we'd have to postpone, which would end up costing us more in the long run.
Okay.
So, any questions so far?
Why don't we start with that, Bill?
So, my understanding, Jamie, is this is for FY26, right?
Well, the, the...
January of fiscal year 26, correct?
The, we would be granted the option in calendar year 2026.
Which is our fiscal year?
Well, it's, it's part of, it would be part of fiscal 2026 and part of fiscal 2027. But, but, but yeah, we anticipate that we would get the option at or near the beginning of calendar 2026, so which would also be fiscal 26.
So, we need the funds in fiscal 26?
Right.
Now, you've just heard from, because you got here just in time to hear what I had to say to Steve Solomon, we've got, this is not going to be a great year to add more things to capital reserve funds, and since we don't have to make a decision on this for fiscal '25, I'm, I'm going to propose to my colleagues that we defer making a funding decision on this for fiscal '25. That doesn't mean that the project isn't worthwhile doing, but there are only so many things we can do in one year, and the library has just added $275,000 to what we have to do immediately. So, I think their, their need is immediate. This one is a year off, so I think we've got time to think about it. The other thing we have to think about is not just what the reduction in $28,600 of electricity costs is, but what would, if we were to do financing on this, what would it cost us to finance it? Because we may want to combine this with some other things you're about to talk about in a longer-term project. So, I think, at least to my way of thinking, this is a project that does not need to have a decision made between now and February 7th.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I guess my follow-up question would be, what would be an appropriate sum to add to the capital reserve for fiscal '25? Are we going to go back to the $30,000 a year that we established in fiscal 2020? Would it be the $15,000 that was contributed for fiscal '24, or would it be some other sum?
So, if you've been following what we've been doing here for the last couple of months, which I guess most people, this is pretty boring stuff, but we've really focused on putting funds into capital reserves, transfers to only five different places for 20, fiscal '25. The library has just brought us the opportunity to do a sixth one, I mean, or increase theirs. And so, I would, at least my position at this point, and we'll have to be talking to the budget committee about this also, is that we will probably do nothing for energy this year, knowing that we have this coming up in '26, at which time, hopefully, we'll have a better picture of some of the other needs and we can make, you know, I talked about energy as being one of the things that we might do with debt, and we'll have an opportunity to think about those things in the following year. But right now, we're already faced with an additional $275,000 of funding that we didn't anticipate a week ago. So, my position is we only have so much we can ask the taxpayer to do in any one year, and we have to learn how to spread this out. We've been talking with the budget committee since June about the fact that capital reserves are a major area that we're focused on. We all, the three of us and the budget committee all know that we're going to be asking the town to put more money into capital reserves over the next several years. We have to do that in a step function, and it's unfortunate that this first year, we first of all have to make up for the money that we didn't put in last year. It's, it's a matter of, you know, if you're doing your personal finances, you have to look and say, well, you know, I've got the car, the house, the boat, the second house, and so on. How are we going to pay for each one of them in, in what order? Just as I said to Steve, there's no question, this is a project we want to do. It's a question about how, how we work it into the finances, and right now, we're trying, first of all, to come up with a budget to put before the, for the, with the budget committee to put before the town meeting in two and a half months, and we realistically have to have that done in the next four weeks so that we can have the budget hearing. So, I don't think there's any question about the validity of the project and the one you're about to talk about. It's just a question of which, which year do you get, get the money? And if you would like to propose some alternative thing that we don't do this year, because I think we're at the point where we don't really have the option of saying, well, let's add more and more. That's, at least that's my position. There are three of us here, and there are nine more on the budget committee.
Okay. BB?
Yeah, I'm tending to agree with Bill, and I can tell you that the budget committee is, hasn't talked about the capital reserve accounts yet. They'll be talking about that, not next week, but I think the week after that, and so I'm sure this, this will come up. And, but I, I am in favor of this, Jamie. I, I would really like to see this happen, too. I just think there's so many other things going on at the moment that we just have to keep our eye on, on the big picture. I, I appreciate all the work that you do. It's wonderful.
I don't think this in any way changes the work they're doing.
Yeah.
There's a burden on us to figure out how to pay for it.
Yep.
I do have a question for Lynn. Lynn, the $28,600, is that spread across the departments just like the rest of the energy, the electricity costs? So, you can't find it in the budget? It's all over the place, right?
Right.
Okay. And, and so theoretically, what would happen is that the electricity costs in those budgets would go down?
Right. Because we do spread it over.
When we, when we spend the $275,000 or $300,000 that Jamie's talking about, right?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I did have, I did have a quick question on that. So, it's going to save us about $30,000 a year, so looking at getting our money back basically in about 10 years.
Right.
Is that about right?
Um, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then, how long do these solar panels sort of live for, so to speak?
Well, that is a really interesting question that I could give you a half-hour answer to, but I won't.
We would overcome.
So, the, so they, there's a 25-year warranty on the solar panels, but since they have no moving parts, it's conceivable that they could last for 50 or 100 or even 200 years, long after all of us are gone. So, they do decline in efficiency by a fraction of a percent per year, so what I can guarantee is that after 200 years, you would have to replace them. But I can't say how close to 200 years we're going to get.
Okay.
But that's one of the beauties of, of a solar array, is that because there are no moving parts, there's nothing to fix.
Okay. I hate to wait on this, Jamie. I think we should put money aside, but then I know that we've got a lot of things, demands, but I, I realize how important this is to the voters of the town of New London, that we do have, reduce our, our footprint as much as possible. So, perhaps BB could see what the budget committee recommends on this, and they may feel that we should go ahead and include it in the budget. So, that would be my recommendation for now, whatever amount they feel is doable. Okay?
Okay, well, thanks, Bill, thanks, BB, and thanks, Janet. I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll wait to hear what you and the budget committee decide.
Yeah.
And hopefully...
Hopefully, Jamie, it's going to be what the town decides, what the town meeting decides.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but you'll be making a recommendation.
Oh, for sure.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And we do appreciate, we know how much time and effort you all, the Energy Committee, has spent on this and the detail, so we do really appreciate your, your efforts on our behalf.
Well, and I appreciate yours as well. So, the, the bottom line is that, as Bill said, as long as the money's there when we need it.
Right.
It doesn't matter when, which fiscal year it's appropriated in, and if we figure out an innovative financing approach, that might be viable as well.
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
And so, you know, the Energy Committee, we're, we're overjoyed to have those two arrays here in New London, but the next step is saving the town and the taxpayers more money in the long run, in the long term, by owning the arrays ourselves.
Yes.
And doing whatever it takes to make that happen. So, should I talk briefly about number two?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, as I mentioned before, we have a municipal goal of 100% renewable electricity by the year 2030. And there are different ways to achieve this. The way that the Energy Committee would prefer, and we'll have to have a conversation about what's the best way, but the way we would prefer would be to construct and own additional solar arrays. So, right now, 40% of our municipal electricity is provided by solar, so we would have to add the remaining 60%. And that means that of the, compared to the, now, it's when I, I'm kind of a numbers guy, but there are two sets of numbers. There's the AC or alternating current numbers and the DC or direct current numbers. So, solar panels generate DC, and it has to be converted to AC before it's exported to the grid or used by any of our lights, pumps, other appliances. So, I'm going to talk just in terms of DC. We'll ignore the AC for the time being because it would just be confusing. So, we have 220 kilowatts DC of solar panels, and we estimate we'll need another 330 kilowatts DC to get to our 100% renewable goal. And at current prices, those 330 kilowatts DC would cost us just shy of $1 million, of which, thanks to the Inflation Reduction Act, we will get a direct payment from the IRS of $300,000 as soon as we can prove that we have built and installed those arrays, which brings the net cost to the town down to just under $700,000. That's still a large sum of money, and I don't think we'd want to approach that with a capital reserve. That would most certainly mean financing. And we all, before we go to the town and the taxpayers to get permission for financing, we need to pin down where those solar arrays are going to go. So, that's something we're working on. We've talked a lot with Chief Lyon about putting them on the roof of the fire station, and it looks like that's a go, at least for the part of the building closest to the street. There's also been talk of putting solar at the Stump Dump, and that seems like an excellent location. And Bob Brown and the Conservation Commission also suggested three additional locations on town-owned land that we're planning to investigate. So, at this point, we have five potential locations where we could spread around the additional municipal solar, and if a heretofore unmentioned site comes forward where we could put all the solar panels on a single site, that might be even better. But, but at least we have the five potential sites already. So, we'll be working on that and keeping you updated, and when it comes time to actually, you know, put a shovel in the ground and start building something, we'll definitely have probably a year or so worth of preparation on the financial side. And one of the great resources we have here in New Hampshire is the Community Development Finance Authority, which is located in Concord, and they have a revolving fund that is used to finance municipal solar projects through subsidized low-interest loans. So, hopefully, as interest rates come down, the rates for these subsidized loans will come down even further, and we'll see if we can prove that the, the savings to the town from having this solar offset the, the interest that we're paying out, then it'll be a win-win because we'll be, we'll be decarbonizing and saving money at the same time. And that's what we like to see.
All right, okay. Does anybody, BB, do you have any questions for?
Yep, I wanted to ask, I'm looking at your memo that you sent to us, and you're talking about analyzing the rate of return. We estimate these arrays will generate 44,568 annual savings in fiscal '28. Do you mean if we financed it, that would be the savings?
That would be the, the reduction in our town-wide electric bills, municipal electric bills, as a result of producing our own electricity rather than buying it from a utility.
Okay, okay. Bill?
And that's, you know, there are a lot of assumptions built into that. We don't know what electric rates are going to be.
Right, yeah.
Two, four, or six years from now.
Sure.
That's our best guess.
So, again, this is something that I certainly support, so.
Yeah.
But Jamie, how about the Inflation Reduction Act money? Is that going to be available if there's a change in administration?
Well, they would have to repeal the law.
No problem.
And...
I mean, well, I don't know all the details of that law. Does it have money that goes on for five more years?
The, the municipal rebates were put into effect for 10 years, actually.
10 years, so.
So, from 2023 through 2032.
Okay.
So, the only risk, only risk then is if the administration were to undo the act?
Right, but thankfully for us, solar enjoys widespread bipartisan support. But thankfully for us, uh, solar enjoys widespread bipartisan support, uh, because it creates so many jobs, that no politician of either party wants to be seen as killing jobs. So, um, that's why there was so much support for getting this passed in Congress in the first place, because you know how difficult it is for Congress to pass anything nowadays.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions for Jamie, since he's the authority and he's here? No? Uh, yep, go ahead. You have to come up to the mic and identify yourself, please.
Uh, thank you, Bob Lyon, resident of New London. Just a quick question, and I know it's separate from what you're talking about. The new science building on Colby Sawyer campus, gigantic building, huge roof, I keep, every time I drive by it, I wonder, are they going to put solar panels on that roof? And is it oriented in the right direction? Any, any thoughts on that?
Well, that's a great question. Um, I, um, every chance I get, I encourage people at Colby Sawyer, whom I know, to, um, get moving on solar again because they were in the forefront of, um, solar on college campuses about a decade ago, but they've fallen behind relative to other campuses, not just colleges and universities, but also high schools are outpacing Colby Sawyer. Um, and, and Procter Academy in Andover is now light-years ahead of, of Colby Sawyer in terms of solar and other renewables. So, um, I know Colby Sawyer has a lot of issues to deal with, and keeping on a sound financial footing is probably the, um, top priority. Um, but there are ways to, as we've proven ourselves and, and they've done in the past, there are ways to install solar without incurring any out-of-pocket costs. Um, and if you do it that way, you, um, you forego a lot of the savings that you could achieve if you financed it yourself. But, um, they're, they're not going to make their financial position any worse by installing solar.
Right.
And they could possibly make it better. So, um, I'll, I'll continue to advocate with solar. It's not like I know, uh, everyone on campus in decision-making roles, but, um, whenever I run into one, um, I certainly will, and I encourage all of you to do the same.
I can't follow up just quickly. So where I was going with that question without actually saying it, because it is separate, it's not town, it's owned by Colby Sawyer, that roof is gigantic. And you had mentioned in your talk about keeping all the panels possibly in one spot. Would that be any type of a possibility for the panels you're talking about to do something in concert with Colby Sawyer? And again, I don't know the exact dimensions of that roof, but it's huge. And I think it's, it's facing south, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. Well, a lot of campus buildings have south-facing roofs, so I'd say there's, there's a good chance of that. Um, it, the, the amount of solar that we're going to need to get to a hundred percent renewable, eh, would probably take up about an acre of land.
Oh.
And I doubt that this, um, Colby Sawyer building is quite that large.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Joe?
Hopefully, the green light stays on.
Thanks, Jamie. Joe Cardillo, excuse me, finally got my voice mostly back. Um, I have to plead a little bit of ignorance with regards to solar, what the panels can produce. We're talking about approximately X amount of kilowatt hours, thirty thousand dollar benefit to the town. Do the panels in place have the ability or to capture more, uh, energy that goes above and beyond the thirty thousand? In other words, does it, is there an ability to generate any other income other than our savings? Um, and by selling it back to the grid, can you reap some financial income? That's the first question, and then I'll leave the podium. The second question is, if, if we're considering all these panels in the future going in one place, have we considered or taken a look at the closed landfill on Mountain Road? I know it is, will be monitored forever. It will never be built on. It remains open. Uh, I know you paid for a study on, you know, a former stump dump area, but there is significant land that we own already, and I just didn't know if that land was ever explored by either the Energy Committee or the town.
Joe, um, Jamie sent us a memo on this, and he included that piece of property.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, and you can answer the other.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Joe. And, um, yeah, and I should mention that the, um, the closed landfill was also on the list provided to me by Bob Brown and the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Um, so I think there's a lot of, a lot of support for putting solar there. The problem is that the, um, electricity, the electric grid infrastructure on Mountain Road is not very good.
Right.
Um, and that's the only limiting factor in how much solar we can put there. Um, if it wasn't for the fact that it's just single-phase power instead of three-phase, then we certainly could serve all of our needs from that single site. But the, the cost of bringing in three-phase power is generally speaking prohibitive. It, it could change a, a million-dollar project into a two-million-dollar project.
Right, yeah.
Um, and we don't want to do that.
No.
So as far as exporting surplus solar electricity to the grid, um, we're already doing that. And the, um, the thirty thousand dollar, or, or actually twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollar figure takes that into account. Um, so we've been receiving credit for the overproduction, um, since day one.
Good.
And will continue to do so. Um, so there's a bidirectional electric meter, and it keeps track of which way the electrons are flowing, whether they're flowing out of the solar and into the grid, or, um, out of the grid and into the sewer pumping station.
Okay. All right. Um, okay. Thank you, Jamie. I really appreciate all you do.
All right. Well, thank you. So I just wanted to mention one more thing, and that is community power.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, um, which some of you know about and others not. So New London is, has joined the Community Power Coalition, and thanks to the Board of Selectmen approving all the relevant documents, um, we're going to be able to launch community power in New London in March. And there will be a public information session, um, in this very location, um, on Wednesday, January thirty-first, starting at seven PM. And I have one favor to ask. Can someone from the Energy Committee get trained on how to use the audiovisual system between now and then, so that we can give a, um, a nice-looking presentation before we take questions from the general public?
We'll, we'll make sure you're all set up, Jamie.
Okay.
I might even be able to entice somebody to stay here and help you.
[laughing]
Will.
Awesome.
Yeah. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Will.
Great. Thank you so much, and, um, thanks to everyone here. We'll hope to see you on thirty-first.
Okay.
Janet, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, of course.
Relevant, you know, all the different things that we're working on in the longer term. You mentioned three-phase power. That's another issue in terms of, um, water capacity also, the ability to pump water from distant places and where the power is going to be more accessible than, than others. So, you know, it's good that we're talking about all these things now with some time ahead because there may be some other, uh, opportunities to work together with other parts of the moving machine here in terms of three, three-phase power. So, thank you.
Well, Bill, thanks for mentioning that because if, by any chance, three-phase power is brought into a new part of town, it might open up, uh, a new site for municipal solar that we might not have considered, um, previously.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Um, okay. Next, are there any public comments about anything that is not on our agenda? Bob?
Um, first, with regard to that topic we were just talking, uh, just addressed, I, on my walk, go by that new Colby building and, uh, managed to collar what appeared to be a project manager and asked about solar, and he reported to me, I can't swear to it, that it is on the plans that they have.
Great.
So I am very hopeful that that, that is something that would be pursued much as anybody else.
Mm.
Um, my name is Bob Bowers, and I am a resident of New London. I am presenting to you tonight a petition to place an article on the town warrant to raise by bond nine hundred thousand dollars to purchase the lot on Seaman's Road abutting the police station and to make safety and security improvements and additional changes to the facility and site to increase the comfort and well-being of our police department personnel. This petition is the work of many residents who believe strongly, as I do, that this is an important step in being prepared for the future, whether that be to purchase land and build a new police station, as the Selectmen have proposed, to renovate and improve the current facility and site, as many others have proposed, or to make renovations in conjunction with and addition to the current building, as even others have suggested. This petition is intended to look to the future of the town and provide a sensible and important way in which to proceed for the benefit of the town, no matter which course the town ultimately chooses. This petition has been brought by one hundred and thirty-six residents, far in excess of what is required to place this article on the warrant. As with any petitioned article, the town clerk will cross-check this petition to ensure that the requirement of twenty-five signatures of registered voters has been met. As background, beginning in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the Selectmen began to discuss and to propose moving the police station from its current site and building, and building a new police station on a new site. In two thousand eighteen, an article by the Selectmen to raise five hundred thousand dollars to purchase, purchase land, including for a new police station, failed by a vote of two-thirds opposed. In two thousand twenty-three, the Selectmen voted to place on the warrant the purchase of the Beulah land across from the post office for a police station, but then rescinded that vote. A citizen petition put it on the warrant, and it failed by a vote of seventy-eight percent opposed. The Selectmen have now hired a consultant to assist them in deciding on a new site for a new police station, with one of the three sites being considered that same Beulah parcel across from the post office, which was rejected by the voters last March. That consultant will also, as I understand it, produce an estimate of total cost to build a new police station at the new site ultimately selected by the Selectmen, and the cost to do renovations to the current building to make it suitable for other uses. When any new proposal, when any new proposal by the Selectmen will be brought to a town meeting is unclear, and even then, it is, if it is approved, it will be years before the project is completed. In the meantime, very little has been done over these past six to seven years to make the existing police station more suitable, safer, and more comfortable for our police department personnel. In two thousand nineteen, water infiltration and some of the heating issues were addressed, and this past summer, at the request of Chief Cobb, the Selectmen followed through on the two thousand fifteen proposal of the planning board to expand dispatch into the adjoining empty office space. The police department has also digitized records, which has freed up significant space, but little else has been done to improve conditions. Chief Anderson and Chief Cobb have both spoken of security concerns due to the lack of bulletproof windows, and that communications equipment is housed near the water lines serving the building and should be moved from that location. These concerns can easily be remedied at the current building. Also, the police department can be expanded into the former district court space while leaving the recreation department where it is. This would provide an additional bathroom in the operations area, a kitchenette area, and a conference room for coffee and lunch breaks and for in-house meetings. That conference room would also provide a safe and comfortable environment for citizens to discuss concerns of a sensitive nature. This can be done at minimal cost with a reservation of use of the conference room for election and other significant needs identified by the Selectmen. Moreover, by owning this parcel, the town could ultimately use it for parking and reduce or eliminate the parking on Seaman's Road. This would make Seaman's Road much safer, both for use with the existing parcel and to reduce congestion and backup of traffic entering onto Main Street during busy times of the day. It is these small steps and many others which could be taken if this article passes. It is the chance to make the premises more secure, safer, and more comfortable for the police department use while waiting for final action by the Selectmen on their plans for a new station, or to make additional improvements to be voted on by the town to improve even more the existing facility and site. I ask the Selectmen to do two things. First, at its meeting on February, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, Selectmen Helm and Selectmen Kidder supported the petitioned article to purchase the Beulah property. Where in the minute state, quote, "Selectmen Kidder noted that she supports the voters being able to decide the issue," close quote. I would ask that the Selectmen be consistent with that statement and support voters being able to decide this issue, and for the important reason that acquiring this land is an opportunity that would benefit the entire town, no matter what course is finally settled upon. Please think of the future of our town and support this effort by all of these petitioners. Second, I have reached out to the owner of the parcel in an effort to discuss this proposal and get feedback from her. Part of that effort included sending to her a letter explaining the proposal and its rationale, and enclosing a copy of the petition. I am not a Selectman, and I have no standing to inquire on behalf of the town, and she has quite understandably declined to have this conversation. Nor do I have access to funds available to the Selectmen to obtain an appraisal of the property. Therefore, I ask the Selectmen, ask that the Selectmen communicate with the owner of the parcel to seek an agreement on a price for the parcel and to obtain an appraisal. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to respond. And here's.
Okay. So Bob, you don't know whether or not she's interested in selling the property?
All I can, all I can respond to, all I can say in response to that is that in two thousand eighteen, when the Selectmen first, uh, looked at this possibility, Kim was asked to go and to speak with her, and she reported back to the Selectmen that the response was that it was not on the market, but that she would consider selling it to the, uh, town if she found a suitable place to live, uh, at the time and could make that work. Subsequent to that, the site review committee, looking at various parcels, made a similar inquiry through Adam Ricker, and the response was basically the same, that, uh, it was not on the market, but that she would consider a sale to the town. This was in two thousand twenty-one, um, if she found a place to live that was acceptable to her, uh, within the town area that she was interested in. Subsequent to that, um, she has purchased, to my, to knowledge reported to me, uh, and clear in the records, uh, a unit at Hilltop, and is now renting out the property to some other parties or party, uh, which I also confirm with Chief Cobb is, uh, is the case that it is being rented. So although I was not able to directly communicate with her, the indications over the years are that there is a very real policy, if it is pursued in good faith and with intention to, uh, reach an agreement, that she would most likely, and I hope be willing, she's a very, clearly, she loves this town as much as you or I or anyone else. She's served on the planning board, she's served on the library board, and I think that we can trust her to be a fair and reasonable person in, in those kinds of discussions. But I do not have a specific answer.
Okay. But you haven't, um, you don't, you're not speaking for her tonight?
I am certainly not speaking.
So if this were to pass, how would, and they, she didn't want to sell it, are you suggesting that we take her property by eminent domain? Is that what you're?
I am suggesting that if, in fact, this passes, that the Selectmen would reach out to her and have discussions about how that might be accomplished, yes. And I am not suggesting that, obviously, you just mentioned it's a possibility, but I'm not suggesting that. I don't, I think the town has had, uh, a policy of not taking property by eminent domain, but it's there if the Selectmen chose to pursue that.
Okay. Bill, you have any comments? BB? Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is COLA. Bob, uh, Bill, would you like to address that?
So at this time of year, we try to figure out what we should be doing in terms of, um, a cost of living adjustment for our employees, and I think in our earlier discussions when we were working on the budget back in the full-day meeting we had, we said that it would be useful if we could, once and for all, have a, a point in time and a, and a piece of data that we were going to use and follow year after year, so that we didn't have to, um, uh, continue to sort of try to guess at what we should do. And, um, so I would propose that this is the year to do that because, um, we've done a lot with our, um, improving our compensation and getting it to the level that, uh, we, we think is, uh, compatible with our seventy-five percent of market, um, goal. Um, the data as of, uh, the eleventh of December, for the New England region of the north, uh, the mid-Atlantic district of the, um, government. district of the government that calculates this data on a monthly basis, would suggest a 2.0% COLA. The numbers are trending downward. This is money that will be given to the employees starting July 1st, so if the trend continues, the Federal Reserve has indicated that they are looking at doing further rate reductions in the coming years, so I think the trends are all in our favor. What's not working in our favor is that some of our neighboring communities are announcing larger COLAs than that. So I think we're in a position of establishing a basis on which we're going to do this in the future, and doing it now, at a time when it would be advantageous to the taxpayer. Or we can continue to do what we do and try to be part of the team around the communities here and do otherwise, but I would rather have us be a leader than a follower in this particular case, and I think this is, we've got a number of difficult budget issues right now, and so this seems to me to be a good compromise to do 2.0% as opposed to 2 and 1/4 or 2 and 1/2, which is what I hear is going on around us. But it's really a judgment call as to whether or not we want to put our stake in the ground now, or we want to continue to sort of put our finger in the wind and see what everybody else is doing. Kim has all the data that we can, if anybody wants to look at it.
Yeah, I called around, too, and got some ideas of what the other towns are doing, what the school district did, and the school district actually is a little different, where with their teachers that are on contracts, they don't get COLA. They get their contract increase, which is 2 and 1/2%. Their non-contract employees did get 4% COLA. I was going to recommend 2 and 1/2%, but, and I hear what you're saying about setting a, trying to set a standard that we can have every year. I think I would want to think about that some more, since this is my first year of having to do this. But I like the idea, but then again, you know, you never know what happens with the economy and things like that, things happen. Anyway, so I was thinking 2 and 1/2, based on what's going on around us, but happy to discuss further.
Okay. Kim, do you have any comments you want to make about this?
No, I agree with what both Bill and BB are saying. I mean, it's tough. All the years that I've been here, we've never, we have never said we're going to use one particular guide. Some towns do, like what Bill has presented here is the CPI for New England, the November number, and so there are towns that will use that particular number, and it has to be November, because we're doing budgets now.
Yeah.
And it just comes out. And so I think, on the one hand, employees like certainty, because sometimes it's, well, maybe you'll get nothing, maybe, and it's all over the board.
Right.
Again, this year, it's, we're still, you know, I think these numbers, the CPI for New England, is only 2%. That's definitely encouraging as far as prices going up, but then we have our colleagues in other towns, and certainly all employees look to those towns as well. So it's a hard thing. I know we've had times when we got 1% COLA, where the other towns got 2 and 2 and 1/2 because of the CPI, and so it's definitely a hard thing. I think the employees appreciate the recent salary study we did and the changes that were made there, but certainly COLA is important to them, too, because they feel like it kind of keeps them even. You know, the cost is going up, and so that keeps them even, so I think it's great that you're seriously considering, you know, this issue in this way.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any comments you want to make about this?
Would it be bad to say no? But as an employee, yes, it's, I think knowing each year that you're using the same metric can help, because if you're giving 2% one year and 1% another year, and the employees don't know why you've come up with that number?
Yeah.
It can make it a little harder to swallow when it's low than if you always use the same metric, and that's just what it is. It's 2% this year, it's 1% next year, it's 3% the following year. I think you'll end up with maybe a little less resentment when it's lower, that, okay, that's what it is, that's the number they've been using for five years. So I think it's a good thing to pick a metric, for sure.
Well, I think, I would hope that the employees realize that we've tried to be positive with regard to our compensation study and make sure that they were paid adequately. So my, I feel that we should go with 2%. I mean, we know what it is, and you can defend it, so I think that's the main thing. I mean, certainly, you look around, and if Newberry and Sunapee and other towns are doing something different, well, I think that our compensation may be better overall than theirs, so I think 2% is fair.
Okay, we good? Do we need a motion on this? Do I have a motion to approve 2% as our COLA?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Bill, you want to talk about capital reserve funds?
You know, I'm thinking, given the discussion we're just having about the library and so on, this is sort of a housekeeping item when I, a housekeeping item when I first asked him to put it on the agenda, because some members of the budget committee have been saying we haven't been clear about what our stance was on their subcommittee report back in, earlier in the summer, late in the summer, and so I was going to suggest that we try to take some votes on making it very clear where we are. We can do that, but, you know, we may start down the road of saying, well, what about the library, what about this? Want to give it a try? So, for example, one of the things that, I thought we had pretty well done this by nodding our heads and so on, but I guess it's not on the record, was that, I had originally thought that it was a good idea to close a number of the, or consolidate a number of the capital reserve accounts. I'm now persuaded that that's probably not a good idea, but the one that we certainly want, I think I've agreed we want to do, is to close the DPW Capital Reserve Fund, which is very small balance, and have the proceeds of that go into the general fund. I think it's less than $2,000.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I guess we, I would move that we, let's see how many of these we can do, and then if they get tied up in the discussion with the library and the energy and so on, we maybe have to go to another meeting. But, so I would move that we close the DPW Capital Reserve Fund and with the balance to go to the general fund.
Second.
Okay, discussion, though this has to go to the voters to approve--
Oh, yeah, this would be, there'd be warrant articles.
I think everybody needs to understand that.
There would have a warrant article, too.
Yeah, okay. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, the second one would be to have a warrant article to close the recreational van trust and put the proceeds to the use of the van.
Bill, we don't need a town meeting vote on that. That's a private trust fund, so that's not town--
Brilliant, so we're going to do that?
Just, we just need to spend, I think there's a little bit of money in it, we have to spend the rest of that money, and it's just done, yeah.
Then to have a warrant article to make the selectmen agents to expend for the following funds, General Cemetery Maintenance Fund of 1983, Sewer Department Capital Reserve Fund of 2007, Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund of 1996, and Transfer Station Improvement Fund of 2002. I move that we ask the town through the warrant to make the selectmen agents to expend money on those accounts, as we do for virtually all our other capital reserve accounts.
Okay, I second that. Can we put them all together?
I'll check. Sometimes DRA doesn't like mixing things when it's related to capital reserves, so it might take four separate votes, but if we can put them in one warrant article, we will, but we'll check with DRA to see what they want to do.
Okay, and do we, what are the amounts in the various funds? Do we know?
That's what I was going to ask. I've got the thing in front of me.
Got it right here. You got it? Lynn? You're faster than I am.
Sidewalks, 132.
General Cemetery Maintenance Fund?
General Cemetery is 120.
$120,000. Sewer Department Capital Reserve Fund?
Sewer Department, 66.
66.
Well, 66 at the end of this year.
Sidewalk?
132.
Sidewalk, 132.
Transfer Station Improvement Fund?
Transfer.
Well, while you're looking for that, these are all funds that have the same general issue that when we need the money, we need the money, so the cemetery one being the great example. We had the fence to do this year, and we couldn't use the maintenance fund because we couldn't get at it.
Right.
Certainly, the discussions we've been having about sidewalks, once we're ready to go after the water maintenance put in, we don't want to have to wait another whole cycle to start working on that project. The sewer department one is like the rest of the DPW, which is, you know, when they need it, they need it. It's a, and the transfer station, same thing, they're all similar ilk, but for various reasons, that's the reason I gave you the years. You can see these are all very old funds, which at some point, for whatever reason, the town meeting didn't give the selectmen the ability to expend these funds at the time that they were approved, and they've wandered along now, and I think when the cemetery thing came up earlier this year, that's when struck us that we need to do something here.
It's $45,035.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Didn't mean to trick you.
No, it's okay, it just wasn't on this sheet.
So anyway, I have that motion to do that in whatever way that Kim finds that we have to do it legally.
All right, and I've had a second, so--
You seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I don't want to, the budget committee, subcommittee's report suggested that we change the current stated purposes of the funds. My understanding is to do that, that would take votes also of the town meeting, and I think the purposes are adequately expressed at this point, and the proposed language changes would only result in a very extended and long town meeting for very little gain, so I would suggest that we not agree with the budget subcommittee on that particular item.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And number five of your memo?
Yeah, number five is to defer additional transfers to the reserves to the bridge maintenance, conservation, energy conservation, computer maintenance, general cemetery, gravel roads, master plan update, police equipment, records management, recreational facilities, town vehicle, equipment repair, and transfer station. We've done that in our proposal to the budget committee for where money ought to go, but again, somebody asked me, well, what about these other accounts? And so the answer was, well, what we agreed to do is to not put any money in those at this point.
Right.
The, it comes up every year, and whatever decision we made this year, we can say we're going to defer it, but on the other hand, we don't know what the board of selectmen makeup will be this time next year, so to think, to go through the agony of doing a lot of votes on this, I think is unnecessary. I think our actions speak as they do, and, you know, we're adjusting on the run now, at least as far as the library is concerned, and we may, as far as energy is concerned, so.
Are there any that stand out to you that we should consider right now?
For capital reserve? Not at the moment, but like I said, the budget committee is going to be having their capital reserve conversation, and it sounds like it's going to be detailed, so there may be more things that come up.
Right, I think the idea here was to clarify our response to their subcommittee memo in a formal way that I thought we had done by our actions when we had our budget meeting, but apparently didn't come across that way, so.
Okay. I have one other question, looking at their memo, they also suggest the GIS update fund be closed, because it doesn't have any funds left.
I didn't recognize, I didn't do that, because the feedback I think we got was that there might be still some desire to update the maps and so on along the way, and that it was good to have that fund still there for that purpose.
Okay, all right.
So that was not, I didn't list the ones not to, they wanted to close that we didn't--
All right, good. I just wanted to put it out there that we reviewed it. The other one was the computer maintenance fund, but I think--
Same thing, I think.
Same thing.
Same thing.
The next step might be, you know, kind of doing what they say, change--
Because there's been, was some discussion, as we all recall, about the need for maybe a technology fund of some sort.
Right.
Both of those might be part of that, but I think we sort of ran out of ability to handle doing that this year also, with all the other things that are going on.
Totally agree.
Are you all set, Bill?
Oh, we did, okay.
All right. The Conservation Commission has requested an expendable trust fund of $10,000 for management of water flow issues on conservation lands. Kim, can you--
Yes. I have some explanation. Recently, the Conservation Commission has had some issues with beaver activity on their property over by Messer Pond. I say recently, that this is a recent issue, they've had this issue many times.
Yeah.
And so what the Conservation Commission is thinking would be helpful is if they had an expendable trust fund, which would allow them to have funds, obviously, they don't lapse year after year, and they would recommend that the selectmen be agents to expend, so that when they have situations where beaver activity, or there could be other things, there could be storms that create damage, mainly water flow damages, that they would have funds available to address those issues. They don't feel that their annual appropriation in the operating budget is enough, they use that money to buy materials to fix trails, and they're, in turn, the person who clears trails, so they feel that having this sort of separate account that would only be used for those purposes and only in the years when they have an issue would be desirable. So if you approve, there would be one vote to create this expendable trust fund, and that vote would also include depositing $10,000 into it.
So I'm opposed to this. This is exactly what we're trying to get away from, which is small reserve funds of one sort or another. $10,000 is the sort of money that we are able to find in the budget to do unusual things when they come up, and if the Conservation Commission, for some reason, runs out of their money, I suspect that we could find a way to take care of the beavers for a year, but I think we'll be going backwards if we were to establish a $10,000 fund at this point. Not that I don't want to control the beavers, but I think this is the nature of an ongoing operating thing of smaller, in this day and age, this is a small amount of money.
Yeah. Didn't we talk at one point about--
Peter, were you here for the beavers?
Pardon?
Were you here just to support the beavers?
Can't stand anymore picking on the beavers.
Didn't we have a conversation about sort of setting a threshold that if we're going to open one of these reserve accounts, we're going to, it's going to be for something like a substantial $50,000? Okay, just making sure I got, I understand that.
That was slightly different, in that that was for a straight, a reserve fund, not a revolving fund, but even for this, it seems to me to start accumulating money, and then three or four years from now, finally, we get $50,000 in the beaver fund, which we can't do anything with, just doesn't make any sense. It goes the opposite direction of what we've been trying to do.
Right.
I'm sympathetic to the beaver issue, but not to the, not to solving it this way.
And I think they're having a current beaver issue there in the Messer Pond, Clark Pond, right? Okay.
Yeah.
So they're going to be coming to us, I think, to ask for--
Well, they've got money themselves until they spend it.
Okay.
You know, they haven't every year used all the money we've actually appropriated for them, but I just think that we have to have some boundaries here, or else we'll, pretty soon, we'll be having the deer fund and the bear fund and so on, too. Sorry, but you two may disagree with me on this one.
No, actually, we have problems with flooding on property we own, so, you know, I get it, and it's, the beavers are very diligent about flooding areas, so. Yeah, I agree with you, Bill, I don't want to start another one.
All right, Lynn, do you want to talk about, oh, go ahead, Colin. Yeah, please come up.
Colin Beasley, resident and budget committee member. I, three things, and I could wait till the budget committee meeting, but maybe we can get ahead of it, because it's sort of on a tight timeline, right? One of the things I've been thinking about asking Bob Brown, and it would sort of modify the current Conservation Commission reserve, would be to expand it for what I would characterize as infrastructure maintenance. So he's coming back to us for money for, for example, Crescenti Bog, right? So I personally am a huge fan of conservation, but I don't know that we, as a town, can chase that rabbit, because the price of land in this town is exorbitant, and it keeps on rising, so I don't know how much money we would have to save in the conservation fund to buy land whenever they figure that out. So I'm going to ask that, when they come to us, I assume they're going to be there, that they would entertain perhaps modifying their reserve fund to accommodate, not trail maintenance, but infrastructure maintenance on the trail, and perhaps these kinds of things. So maybe we can tweak the reserve fund's definition that would enable them to have access to funds that they otherwise don't have.
I think that's a great idea.
I do, too.
Yeah.
So I'm just, get ahead of the scheme, that's one of the things I wanted to do. Bill, I would like to, if you have something in writing on the debt issue that you're concerned about with respect to the library, as, you know, you wanted to take it out of bond and put it into the reserves?
I prepared a memo for my colleagues, which is public debt. I prepared a memo for the, my colleagues, which is a public document.
If, if you could make that available to the Budget Committee, so we can have those, that mathematics in front of us, I think it'd be worthwhile, right?
It includes a proposal as to how to, how to take care of the funding out of.
Good.
Other, other sources.
Good.
I was sure you'd ask.
Well, you know, time is, time is, time is fleeting, so.
It's, it's a good discussion.
And my last item was, excuse me, so I know that we are spending forty thousand dollars this year on the, uh, police station relocation discussion, right?
Mm-hmm.
We haven't decided where that money's coming from yet, is that correct? The source of funds?
Well, right now, the selectmen have decided to have it come out of the operating budget, so I haven't come up with a list of where, it'll probably come from various different departments.
Okay.
And it's also possible to use ARPA funds for this.
And I've heard that, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I, I would, I personally am in favor of using.
Using ARPA.
ARPA funds.
How mu, how much do we have in ARPA?
Over two hundred thousand.
And this.
A quarter of it, a quarter of it has been committed to the water precinct and a quarter to the sewer, so there's fifty percent of the four hundred thousand dollars. We've used a little bit, oh, used some of it for the bleachers at the school, and anything else other than those two? I don't think so, so.
Body cams.
Body cameras.
It's fairly broadly characterized.
Yeah, yeah.
And how, when does that run out?
To commit it by the end of twenty twenty-four, and use it by twenty twenty-six.
Okay, okay. So what I have not seen in any budget from the Select Board yet is any monies for fiscal year twenty twenty-five on the police station activity. So, as I understand, the CIP plan had seven hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five for two things, design and land purchase. I don't know, I don't know whether we're going to be in a position for land purchase. So my question is, is the Select Board thinking about putting monies into the budget, and to the extent that we could have that information in advance while we are looking through the Budget Committee activity, and then where would that money come from?
Okay.
Okay?
We'll think about it.
If you don't think about it, then we won't be in the budget.
I know, I know, you need to know.
All right?
Right, of course.
Okay, thank you.
We're aware of the timeline.
Okay, well, okay, very good, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thanks, Colin. Okay, um, Lynn, did you want to talk about the updated budget sheets?
Absolutely. So I've given you updated budgets, um, the changes that have been made on there are new numbers for payroll and related line items to include the wage studies changes that you guys approved, and, um, the COLA that you guys just approved, so that is in this.
Okay.
Um, I did remove the hundred and fifty thousand dollar placeholder that was in that bottom line item under executive for these changes. Um, I also reduced the assessor services by a thousand dollars, that went down to ninety-two seven seventy-seven. Um, I reduced the library appropriation from the original seven forty-one down to the seven oh nine eight ninety-five that they modified their request. And then I also, um, talked to Bob after the Budget Committee, um, regarding his overtime, and, um, I feel confident that he's going to request that come down, so I've, I've lowered that to forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's all in this new sheet, new worksheet that I've given you guys. So that brings the total down to twelve million one hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars. That's a reduction of seventy-one thousand four oh six from your original budget that you did on the ninth of something.
So the hundred and fifty thousand we set aside for pay raises, did we?
It was sufficient, yes.
It was sufficient.
It was more than sufficient.
Oh, great, good.
Okay. What about that, that line item that Bob had that was for, like, um, winter, um, winter costs or something like that, winter, I think it was eighty thousand dollars, and there was a question on that, that he was going to go back and look at?
That was the overtime, wasn't it?
I knew, I know the overtime was, was definite, and that had to do with, with storms and all that, so him and I kind of worked some formulas on that.
Okay.
To see where we stood.
Maybe that was it, I'll double check and I'll ask you.
Okay.
And then email.
Okay.
Yep.
Bill, do you have any questions for Lynn? Okay, BB, anything else? No? Okay, all right, thanks, Lynn. Um, so, we need appointment of inspectors for the election, um, we have a slate that was recommended by the ballot clerks and the town clerk and the moderator, so do I have a motion to approve that, that slate? It is listed on our town website, if anyone cares to see who, who is interested in helping out with our election, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And regarding House Bill one four seven nine relative to prohibiting use of federal, state, or local funds for lobbying activities, as requested by the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and Kim, you, you were going to review this for us?
Yeah. Um, House Bill fourteen seventy-nine is, um, a bill that would make it so that the town of New London could not spend its funds, um, for use of lobbying activities. We currently use New Hampshire Municipal Association for those, for that purpose, um, they have been doing that for towns and cities for probably about eighty years in New Hampshire. Towns and cities obviously can't afford to hire their own lobbyist, um, staff can't really spend the time to go and speak to the many lobbyist, the many legislators in New Hampshire, I think we have the largest legislative body in like the whole country, there's loads of them. So NHMA, um, they inform, give information to lobbyists, uh, I'm sorry, to legislators about things that affect towns and cities, so they're kind of our eyes and ears in the legislature about what things, you know, they will comment on bills that will hurt towns and cities essentially. I think it's an important part of any town government to have that voice and conquered, and I think that if this bill passes, the only lobbying that will be done will be from private entities, you know, EverSource, you know, all of the private companies that can afford to hire lobbyists, they'll be able to give information to our legislators and towns and cities, unless they can afford their own, um, they wouldn't be able to hire their own, because this would prohibit any money to be used for that purpose. I'm not sure if I'd be even able to go down and testify at bills, you know, sometimes we've gone down the, um, the bill to allow towns to regulate speeds, um, on, to lower speed limits on town roads, I went down to testify for that, I've testified for some others on behalf of New London, so I'm not sure if that would be impacted, given that you pay me, and that's government money, so I would recommend that you join with many other towns and cities in supporting NHMA and opposing, um, this House Bill, because I think it would have extremely detrimental impact on our town and all towns and cities.
Okay. Do I have a motion to oppose House Bill one four seven nine?
So moved.
Second.
Um, any further discussion about this?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I should, I did have a chance to talk to Karen Ebel about this, and she's in opposition as well, so.
Okay, good.
She's on board. I didn't get a hold of Dan, I tried to talk to him, but.
Okay. Um, Putnam, you want to tell us about appointments you would like to have made to the Recreation Commission? Please.
Uh, so my name is Putnam Kidder, I'm the Recreation Director, and I have two people that have approached the Rec Commission as possible new members for the Commission, um, we have voted in support of their applications, and we would like to present them to the selectmen for final approval. They've been, we've talked with them, and also reminded everyone else on the board about the importance of consistency of attendance at the meetings, um, and everyone knows that's really important, to be able to forward our goals of the Rec Department and be able to plan and then pull off long-range and short-range events and programs, so we have two people, Cara Leoni and Julie Corey have put their hats on their ring to join us, and they both have unique skills that they bring in motivation, and, um, they seem like they'll be a great addition. We have, would have one more spot that we need to fill currently to go from six to seven, which was what we were before, we had three people who have, um, stepped down in the prior, I think, three or four months, we've had some turnover, and we're excited to get more consistent.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts? I think both of them will be a great addition to the Recreation Commission, so do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Cara and Julie?
I move that we appoint Cara Leoni and Julie Corey to the Recreation Commission, and to, the terms to be determined.
Okay.
In consultation with Kim about the staging of the terms.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And then the second part for, um, the Rec was a, um, proposal to have special permission to be able to have alcohol served at an upcoming winter carnival event here at Whipple. Um, we have contracted, um, a catering company called Flatiron Catering that has agreed to do this event, obviously pending final approval from the selectmen and special permission to serve alcohol at this event. We're hoping to do, last year we did a big band here as part of a Saturday night, part of our other events for the Winter Carnival in early February, this time we're going to do an adult spelling bee, which is kind of a takeoff of a trivia night, and we'll have teams come, and they will be able to have spelling competitions, kind of like a grown-up version of the kids' version, um, and we're going to have food, and they feel like food and, um, some drinks for people would be a great addition to the event as a whole, we're excited about offering this event as something new and different and a good addition to the Winter Carnival. We'd be doing it in conjunction with the Rotary Club, um, to be able to raise funds for the Rec Department and then also for the Rotary Club as well, and also being able to partner with the Rotary is really important, to be able to have more, um, people to help out with the organization in pulling off the event.
Have you talked with Chief Cobb about this?
Um, I've mentioned it to her, yeah, that, that, that would be an option to explore, and I've talked to, um, the caterer, he's been doing this for twenty-plus years, um, and I know we had thought about that in the past, talking about whether we could have alcohol here and whether we would need an officer here, um, and this gentleman who runs this catering place had said that very infrequently does he feel the need that they have to have a officer here stationed, um, so he didn't see that as a, a problem.
Okay. All right. BB, do you have any questions for Putnam?
How many people did you get to come out for that big band thing last year? There was, it was a big crowd, wasn't it?
Um, I think fifty to sixty people.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and, and it was, we did it twice, we did one for Winter Carnival, and then we did one in the spring as well with the same band, and last year it was bitterly cold, I think it was ten below zero that night, um, so kept some people away, but again, we're trying to find, um, kind of another addition to this event, and this was an idea that was brought to us by the current president of the Rotary, as something new and different that might be kind of engaging and fun.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
I just, I would also have that thought, though, in talking to Emily.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want a police officer?
Yep.
You know, around for that, but otherwise I think it's, it's a fantastic idea, I'm definitely coming to that.
I hope you're a good speller.
I am.
Hey, BB, hey, BB, how about a team of the selectmen?
Awesome.
All right, Bill, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, so, um, do we go ahead and approve alcohol at this point? Can we?
Yeah, they would need selectmen's approval, because the rule is no alcohol on town property.
Right. So we don't want to hear whether Chief Cobb, well, we're going to, okay.
Well, you could approve it pending.
Yep.
Make sure she has no problem.
And, and so the next steps would be, he's given me his, um, liquor commission, his license, and then, so what would happen is that he contacts them, and then he has an inspection of the location, and then he has insurance that would cover, as a provider of alcohol. He would cover, his, his insurance would extend to the town and to the Rotary and anybody else that needed to be covered, so we would make sure all those pieces were in place, and he said that if, he's local from Laconia, and he said that he, if, once we get the inspection of this, this location, we could have it as a one-time thing, and then he could come back, and maybe if we wanted to do other events, we could, we wouldn't have to go through these hoops all the time.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying that I want to have blanket of that, but I think it would make it easier if, if we wanted to have, sometimes this, this kind of event happen.
Okay.
With these kind of, um.
All right, so, um, do I have a motion to approve alcohol for the adult spelling bee on Saturday, February third?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Putnam, it sounds like fun.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Kim, do you have any, a report?
Yes, um, we continue to hear from some elderly taxpayers about the impact of the new assessments and the increase in taxes and the burden it's creating on some, some folks, and it reminded me that there is a program called the Elderly and Disabled Tax Deferral Program, where if an elderly or disabled person who is having trouble paying taxes, they can apply to have those taxes deferred, and then the idea is, um, once the property is sold or they move out, then the taxes become due at a lesser interest rate. Um, and there's obviously some things that qualifications and things, but I will write an article in Municipal Matters, and we'll make sure, Cara and I, um, have been talking about it, so we'll make sure we make this more well-known. It's not something that's really that well-known, it doesn't happen all that often, but it certainly is a way for somebody to stay in their home and not currently have that tax burden, again, the town will get the taxes, it's just deferred, so that's, if you hear from anybody and with questions about that, you can send them my way.
Kim, could you provide us with a, a list of some of these people, so we can understand the nature of the burden?
Sure, yep.
You could be, the names can be anonymous.
Yep, sure, absolutely.
Person A through Z.
And I would say for, much of it is the people who live on the lakes and have modest homes who have lived there for a long time, those are the people that are really having, um, sort of sticker shock, where they're, the amount of money that they're paying this year is much higher than prior years, and, you know, so they're the, they're the main ones.
I think it'd be useful for us to have some, some facts on this.
Sure, yep, and, you know, this isn't for, you know, it's not, I would say it's for, it's, the tax deferred, it can only go as high as eighty-five percent of the value of the house, so, I mean, depending on how, you know, and how much the house is worth, it could be ten years, twenty years, really depends. Um, it's, it's been used in New London before, many years ago, but it's, it's really not that common a program, so, but I think it's worthwhile, get it out there.
Sure.
Let people know it's there.
Right.
I mean, and again, the town does eventually get the taxes when the person sells the home, but.
Um, and also, we have a veterans credit?
Yep, and so there's some others, and we've been talking about this, too, um, veterans credits.
Maybe put those out there in the Municipal Matters.
Yeah, elderly, and the elderly, and again, with the elderly, even people who are getting that, their, their taxes have gone up so significantly that while it helps, um, it's, they're still paying a higher tax bill.
Sure.
So, yes, we, when people come in, we give them all that information, it's going to be, it's always in the town report, but we'll be more proactive, especially with this elderly and defer, disabled deferral, it's not one that's a common one. So, it might help, but just if you hear of anybody, just send them our way.
Okay.
On the other thing, the police chief, fire chief, public works director, and our planner met with the folks from the London Springfield Water Precinct, DOT, Underwood Engineers, on, to discuss the water main replacement project, they spent more than two hours, I wasn't there, the chief did provide me with his, um, paperwork on it, and if you want, have any questions about what went on at the meeting, I'm sure Chief Lyon would be able to give you a little bit of a rundown and what the planning process is for the water main replacement project?
Chief?
Yeah.
It's a hot topic, chief.
Yeah.
I had meant to go to the meeting, boy, it was more than two hours, I was like, wow.
It was. Put me on the spot, I, you know, Ken Jakes wasn't here. Um, so, so briefly, um, at the, I guess it would be tomorrow, an RFP will go out, they expect to open up the bids beginning of February, so that they can have a price and hopefully It was. Put me on the spot. I, you know, Ken Jakes wasn't here. So, so briefly, at the, I guess it would be tomorrow, an RFP will go out. They expect to open up the bids beginning of February so that they can have a price and hopefully go to the Springfield Water Precinct Annual Meeting and have those funds approved. And hopefully, it would start end of April, beginning of May. Some of the, the considerations, three phases. So there's approximately 50, and don't quote me, but 5,800 feet of pipe that needs to be laid. We talked about worst-case scenario, how much can be dug in a day? And, and at a worst-case scenario, it would be 100 feet per day. But some of the considerations are businesses, the barn players, parking, making sure that we don't reroute traffic into more residential areas that are not suitable for, for traffic, control of traffic, whether it be flaggers and the interaction with the police department. So that's, that's pretty important. So I think it was a, a very productive meeting. And again, three phases, so whether they do phase one and three, and then two, is all contingent upon scheduling and who they have as a contractor. Hopefully, they'll have multiple bids. And for instance, Colby Sura's graduation is, is that, that I wanna say first full week, maybe May 11th-ish. So that was a consideration. So we all know that this is gonna be a huge impact on the town of New London, especially one of the most important times of the year when it comes to people coming up and recreating and, and visiting our area. But unfortunately, I think it was maybe Ken Jake said that the positive thing is, we won't have to do this again for 65 years. So, so that, that's a, a positive thing.
That's a guarantee.
Yeah.
Always on the bright side.
Yeah, so again, it talked about making the drops to various houses, what that looks like, especially going across the roads. They did talk about, just so people are aware, nighttime operations. And so nighttime operations would be from 6:00 PM until, I wanna say, 1:00-ish on the, and I'm going by memory, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, a copy of the, the, the plan. But that would only be one, two, three nights a week. So, and also the paving aspect of things, as they go, they would pave. They hope to be wrapped up by November of 2024, and then maybe a final coat be laid down in the spring. It's all really contingent upon weather. I mean, if we have a, a season like we did this year with the, with the crazy weather that we've had, then, then whether they're delayed from weather or it, it's prolonged into that, our wintertime when you, usually we have snow on the ground, so.
Okay. Chief, do you have an ETA on the fire truck?
So the fire truck is in Vermont. I spoke to
It's closer.
It's, it's closer. It's closer, it's coming. And so, and I said, we've got a citizens advisory meeting coming up. Would love to have it. And, and the, the dealer wasn't able to, to guarantee that it's here this weekend. So, but, but I'm, we're, we're hoping in the next week or, or so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Well, thank you, chief. Any questions? No? Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping out on my report. That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. Any other meetings, reports? BB, you haven't had budget, right? No?
No.
Okay. We don't have any minutes to read. Okay. All right. I didn't look at them. Because there was no link. That's when I look.
Okay, our next regular Selectmen's meeting is Thursday, January 18th. I encourage everyone to go to the school deliberative session on Saturday, January 6th at 9:00 AM at the high school. Planning Board meets Tuesday, January 9th. Budget Committee meets Wednesday, January 10th. The offices are closed Monday, January 15th in honor of Martin Luther King. And the Conservation Commission is meeting Wednesday, January 17th. If there are no other things, we have to sign some stuff?
Isn't this January 9th Planning Board meeting, the public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinances? Yep, yep.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We have some things to sign.
Okay.